If he would lead us in the pledge allegiance and a brief prayer.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Father, and we thank you for the opportunity to summon with this morning, Father. We thank you for bringing all of us here safely, Father. Father, we ask you this morning, Father, that you govern our directions, Father, that you give us, Father, the ability, Father, to make decisions, Father, that will be pleasing to you, first of all, Father, and that, Father, that will take care of our citizens, Father, of this great county, Father, we live in. Father, we thank you for all the employees of this great county, Father. We ask you to bless them throughout the day, Father. Father, we thank you, Father, for the leadership, Father, for all the commissioners, Father. We ask you to bless them and their families, Father. And then, Father, as school is about to end for the summer, Father, we ask you, Father, to just bless the administrators, the students, Father, and let everything be well with thee, Father. Father, we give you the honor, we give you the glory, because you're worthy, Father. We thank you, Father. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. So before we get started, I'm gonna try to frame a couple of things for folks here. Yesterday, I sat down with Christie King, our CFO, and Randy Tillman, our county manager, and we went through this budget as it's gonna be presented today, pretty much line by line. And about two weeks ago, after looking after our last budget meeting, I sat down and had a conversation with Christie, and I asked her to do something based off of the projected deficit that we had in our budget of about $7.8 million, which roughly equates to about 10%. I asked her to go through the budget and cut our budget by 10%. And then yesterday, when we sat down and we talked, there's some things that I looked at and she presented to me, and I'm just not comfortable doing them. And the, for instance, I'll give you is, quite frankly, the majority of our budget in this county goes to fund four essential functions: law enforcement, fire, EMS, and public works. And I am not comfortable with the idea of cutting any of those services and compromising the safety of the people of this county. So with that being said, and I'll give you an example. We are looking to expand the EMS services in this county and open up an EMS station in Stillson in this year. It's badly needed. If you live out that way, you know how long it takes to get an ambulance to your house. Sometimes it could be 20 minutes, sometimes more, 22 minutes. Okay, 22 minutes on average, and that's an average. So there's gonna be a high and a low on that range. And depending on where you live in the county, it may take longer. So we need that. But if we ask our EMS folks to cut 10% from their budget, they're basically robbing Peter to pay Paul so that we can expand those services. If we ask our sheriff to go in and cut his budget so that he can supply more road deputies that are on patrol, and he can increase his staff in the jail to manage the population that's in there, what are we doing? Now, I know people talk about, we need to cut the fluff. And I'm happy to sit down and talk with anybody individually, and we can talk about fluff. But I'm gonna tell you, there ain't a whole lot of fluff there. So we're gonna present some numbers and some facts today. And I don't want anybody to take anything that's being said today is, this is what's gonna happen, because what we're doing is we're discussing courses of action. But we're gonna have to have some hard conversations here in the next week or two about where we're gonna go. I spoke with the Kiwanis in Brooklyn on Tuesday night, and I told them something. And I said, the reality of this is, I've heard a lot of people over the last few months that have complained about a lot of things. And I've got to where I tell people, and this is how I try to frame stuff. You know, you're not happy with your fire protection. Okay, well, we can build a fire station for you. And I talked with the builder that that's all they do is build municipal buildings, jails and fire stations, last week. He says, right now, they're building a fire station in Bryan County. The cost of that fire station is gonna be about $525 a square foot. Average fire station's about 6,000 square feet. Do the math on that. That just gets you a building. Then you gotta buy the apparatus to go inside it. Then you gotta pay for the equipment. You gotta pay for the staff. It doesn't take long to come up with about $12 million, a $12 million tab, to build that fire station. I'd love to put one on every corner in this county. But what's the price? What are we willing to pay to have that fire protection? Along those same lines, there's been a lot of complaints this week about the roads, and the reality is, we live in the dirt road capital of Georgia. There's been some things that have happened here in the last year that have drastically changed the topography of this county. Pond dams that are no longer in existence. And I know there's people that are saying that those pond dams should be rebuilt, but those pond dams are on private property, and they were built 70 and 80 years ago. If the property owners go to rebuild those dams, they're not gonna be able to pile dirt up like they did 70 or 80 years ago, or use log beams to rebuild those dams. They're gonna have to build it to the 2025 standard. The county's already worked with GEMA, FEMA, the Corps of Engineers, and has even reached out to the Department of Agriculture to try to get assistance for these folks to rebuild these dams. With the state of our federal government right now and the cuts they're making, there's just not the grant money available that there was even six months ago to do those things. So, and I know that I'm not painting a very optimistic picture with this, but the reality of this is, the water that used to be retained by those dams is not being retained anymore. So when you get a rain like we did this last week, that water's not being held back. It's coming. And it's pouring down all over the county, all over the roads, and it's washing things out. Every time we have to go in and make a repair on that road, it costs money. It takes time and staff to do it, and that means they're not doing the regular maintenance that they need to do on the road. So what I'm saying is, it's getting expensive to do these things. Now, the one solution for it is you start paving a lot of roads, but that costs money as well. And I'll tell you that there's a lot of people, when you start talking about paving their dirt road, not my dirt road. I don't want my dirt road paved. So if you're gonna live on a dirt road, that means that you're gonna have times that your road is gonna have washboards on it, that it's gonna get muddy, and you might not be able to go about your regular business because of nine inches of rain in 24 hours. That's the hard truth. Nobody wants to hear that. But that's the reality, what we're looking at right now. We could put eight motor grader crews out there on the roads, and that could keep these roads pristine all the time, but there's a cost that's associated with that. What are we willing to pay as a county to do that? Now, I can tell you that one of the things that I campaigned on, that I elected on, and I still believe in, is that we need to keep our taxes as low as possible. I absolutely hate property taxes. I don't think there's a more regressive thing in the world. But the reality is, that's how we fund our government right now. There's been a bill that was passed this last year to provide relief to property tax owners, House Bill 528. Part of that was enacted, and it has led to a property tax freeze. Mr. Bobby Fisher from the Tax Assessor's Office is gonna come up here and talk some about this. But the piece of this House Bill 528 that hasn't been enacted yet and still needs to be voted on in this county is a 1% sales tax that goes in to directly offset your property taxes. So the people of this county this year will get a lock in their property taxes. If you have property and it's in homestead exemption, your rates are not gonna go up this year. But because of that, that means that the county's revenues are being cut at the same time. So when we start talking about numbers here, keep that in mind. I know this is sounding pretty doom and gloom and scary, and I don't want to scare anybody, but I wanna be a realist with what's going on. And I want people to understand that what we're talking about here today is not a finished product. There's still discussion that's being made. I can tell you that since I've got here this morning, I've had conversations with folks. I've talked to James Pope about raising fees for all the services that we've provided. I've talked to Dee Crosby in the Department of Recreation about, hey, what can we do as far as raising our fees for recreation? And I'm not just talking about what you paid to enroll your kid in T-ball or rec ball or whatever it is. I'm talking about what about the fees that people pay to rent a ball field to come here to have a tournament? What about the folks that come and use our ag arena to host different events? If our price of business is going up, we should defray some of that cost to those folks, the end users of those services. Now, realistically, if we raise all those fees, we're probably gonna make about another half million dollars. That's not gonna cover the deficit that we have. So again, we have some hard choices to make. And like Mr. Mosley prayed earlier, and I believe that you have to ask God for things. We have to ask God for wisdom. And I can tell you that right now, what your county commission needs is not people yelling and not pitchforks and torches and threats of, you won't get reelected. What we need are people that will come up and have rational conversations. Let's work through this. I work for everybody in this room and those folks out there on the interweb that are watching this. So to all these gentlemen up here, we work for you, and we want what is best for this county. We're willing to talk. We're willing to listen. But yelling and screaming, calling people crooks, being ugly to them is not gonna make this any better. So with all that being said, I'm gonna ask Ms. King now to come up here on the hot seat and talk to us about some numbers.
Can I talk from here?
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Good morning, everybody. I did not do a slideshow this morning, but I've given all the commissioners a packet of information. For anyone in the audience that didn't get one, they're out on the table. You can grab one on the way out, or I'll email them to anyone that's watching. So the first page, I have just a comparison of the numbers. I have exactly the numbers we talked about at our last work session on April 29th. And then the next column is the current working budget that I have as of today. So on April 29th, our total tentative budget was $74,355,683. As of today, I'm looking at $71,977,870. That's a difference of approximately $2.4 million. And then on the next column, I have the changes to show kind of, you know, what I did to get these numbers down a little bit. The bulk of it is, there was a calculation error in the way that my software was calculating the health insurance. I knew that there was an issue there on that April, at that April 29th meeting, but hadn't had a chance to figure out what it was and fix it, so I have now fixed it. And we're now down to right about the $3 million increase in health insurance that Mr. Browder talked to y'all about. Some of the other changes, I took out a few of the requested positions. That was four full-time positions that have been requested, one for the CI, one for emergency management, one for engineering, and one for the tax commissioner. So that's kind of, those are the changes that I've been able to come up with. Still in our tentative budget, we have several, we do still have a bunch of new positions. I have a part-time constable for the magistrate court. I don't, that is not a high-cost position. It's part-time. But magistrate court needs the constables out there serving papers, or they can't move people through their court process and get them to pay the fines and fees and all the things that they owe. So I feel like that probably will pay for itself. Next, we still got six EMT paramedic positions for the Stillson Station. That was on the poll that we did at that work session. That was top priority, was to fund that. So we've got those positions in there to fund that new station. Next, we have a bunch for the sheriff. We have four jail officers and one patrol deputy. That's part of the sheriff's, the five-year hiring plan that we have been working with the sheriff on to increase their patrol and their jail staffing. Then we had, they had asked for one additional SRO officer for the county schools that are already, already have SROs to give more leadership, that's the word I'm looking for, to the current SROs, and then we have the eight SROs to work in the city schools. So those, there comes money, funding from the Board of Education with those positions. Then we have a full-time administrative person for the office of the coroner. I think we've all heard from the coroner that they desperately need some administrative help. They don't have any, anyone doing that administrative work, so it kind of falls on the coroner in his free time to work around that. And then I have two solid waste equipment operators. And at the last work session, there was a lot of discussion about needing to help public works and give them what they need so that they can operate. So that's what that first page is, just kind of where we were and where we are now. So if you'll turn to the next page, the next three pages are showing estimated revenues depending on different millage rate options. And so I have, the first page is if we did a full millage rate rollback. I used actual numbers from the current tax digest. Those are, of course, subject to change based on appeals and things that happen between now and then, but those are as of today's digest, basically. And that would be $66,591 at our proposed budget, almost $72 million. And then I have a list of some items that are one-time costs. The compensation study, impact fee study, a bunch of one-time costs for new positions. That's equipment that they need to work and uniforms that new employees would need. Those are one-time things. These are ideal things to use fund balance on. So if you kind of take those out, and I also use contingency, because that's the money that we're kind of setting aside, because we know something's gonna come up. So we always set aside some budgeted money for those little things that come up. And that's another ideal way to use fund balance, because that is basically a rainy day fund. So that comes out to about $809,000 contingency and one-time costs. If you subtract that from the overall budget, we're short about $4.5 million, where expenses exceed revenues, and we've gotta make that up somehow. So if you take that four and a half and then add those one-time costs, that would be a total of $5.3 million that you would need to cover probably with fund balance if we were to roll back to the statutory rollback rate. So that's the first page. The second page is if we did just a small rollback, a quarter of a mil. So it shows, all the rest of the numbers on the page are the same. I just changed the estimated revenues. So that bottom-line number of what we would, our difference of expenses over revenues is about $3.4 million. That looks a little bit better. The last page is if we kept our millage rate the same, we would be down to a difference of $2.4 million. So either way, we are going to, I'm recommending that we use some fund balance to balance the budget. We have been doing pretty well with that. We have had a healthy fund balance. And I feel pretty confident that we would be okay using that number out of fund balance to balance our budget this year. The final page is, I know the writing is very tiny, so I can email this to anyone who would like to blow it up, so you can read it better. But what I'm trying to accomplish is to show where we would have to try and pull money from while still supporting the departments that we've decided the commissioners have shown interest in growing and expanding services. So the first column is just this year's budget. Second column is where we kind of started with budget requests. The third column is the tentative working budget I have right now. You see, I've got a lot of color coding here. Tried to explain them at the bottom, but basically, I took in red, these are the departments that we are growing. We are adding positions in the sheriff that are needed. So we really can't cut from the sheriff and expand his services. We can't cut from EMS and add a station. We can't cut from the coroner and add an employee and try to grow his office. I've heard a lot of support for public work, so I don't think it's reasonable to cut from there either. That is half of our budget. Those departments in red, that's half. Almost. That's almost half. I also have kind of in orange or peachish color, this is the judiciary. I included these in the calculations of possible places to cut, but we are legally obligated to fund the judiciary. Probably not the best places to cut. Some of them we might not, could cut. The reserve funds I had in green, I took that out as a place to cut, because we're planning to fund that with fund balance anyway. And then the blue is, those are the outside agencies. Those are agencies that we have to fund. But that was just kind of for informational purposes, but that's what those are. So if I take all these departments aside from the red, we talked about trying not to affect any of the employees. We don't wanna cut people. We don't wanna cut positions. We don't wanna cut pay. So if I take all of that personnel cost out, that's $19 million out of $30 million. That leaves us with $10.9 million of non-personnel costs from those departments that are not sheriff, EMS, CI, coroner, roads, and solid waste. To cut, if we wanted to keep, if we wanted to do a full statutory rollback, we'd be looking for $4.5 million out of that 11. That's 41% of those costs. So you would be asking all of these departments to cut 41% of their non-personnel budget. These departments don't have 41% of their non-personnel budget in things that you could just cut and still allow them to do the job that they have to do. I've looked at the finance department's budget as an example. We would be, our budget is, proposed budget is $936,000. Forty-one percent of that is $116,000. Our budget, $654,000 is personnel. $106,000 is professional services, which includes, most of that is our audit, and also includes our municipal financial advisor and our investment management program. $128,000 is software. That leaves us 40, almost $47,000 of other things. So I could cut everything other than those top three big things and not even be halfway to cutting that 100 and however much that was. So my point is that if we cut, if we cut some of these big things, if we cut a municipal financial advisor, we're losing bench strength. We're losing knowledge that we have, we need to get from somewhere. So then, do we hire another employee to help us through things? If we eliminate a software package, if we eliminate, for example, OpenGov is about $41,000 a year. That's how we do our budget. That's how we create our budget book. It has transparency, where the public can click on reports and see actual numbers at any time at their convenience. So we're losing, we would be losing all of that. The time it would take to do the budget in a different method, using Excel, so it doesn't cost any more money, that's a lot of staff time. Finance department hasn't added an employee since 2018, and software is the reason we've been able to do that. So I'm just trying to help people understand with examples that we don't have a lot of fluff. Even out of our $46,000, you know, $5,000 is a postage machine. $5,000 is postage, that we have to mail checks when we pay bills. So we don't have a lot of fluff. We do have a little bit of travel and training, but if you cut our travel budget and we only do virtual training, that's still only $5,000. And we do have requirements to get training. Several of us have licenses or certifications that require training every year. We are not the only ones. A lot of departments have to have training to do what they do. Some of them don't offer it virtually. So you really can't cut their travel and allow them to do their job. So that, all of that is the reason that I cannot in good faith recommend cutting the budget. We could cut the additional new services, but I don't, I don't see a lot of other places to cut. So that's, that's kind of what I have today. I know it's not, you know, super optimistic either. However, we do have Bobby Fisher here to give a little bit of hope on the tax information.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Fisher. I'm the Deputy Chief Appraiser for the Assessor's Office. And as Christie said, I hopefully can give you a little bit of relief on the otherwise tax increase that our citizens may feel from this budget. So I think Dallas got some slides up here. Next. Yeah, it's not clicking. As Chairman Bennett mentioned earlier, House Bill 581 was voted on and enacted in the last general election, and that provided for a floating homestead exemption for property owners, homesteaded property owners of Bullock County. And in effect, what that does is provides them relief from the assessment increases due to market conditions. So in a rising real estate market, a homesteaded property owner is not going to feel the brunt of those assessment increases. For example, I have an example up there. A property that last year was valued at $100,000, saw a 10% increase in market value, raising it to $110,000. This year, that homestead exemption is gonna provide them with $10,000 of exemption to offset that value increase, therefore netting them a taxable value the same as the prior year, if you go to the next slide. So if you were homesteaded last year, you're automatically gonna get this, and if you've applied this year, you're gonna receive it as well. New for this year, as part of House Bill 92 that passed this session, during the 45-day appeal period, when you get your assessment notice, you will also be able to apply for that exemption during that time and have it take effect for this year. So if you don't have it now, it's not too late to get it. You have 45 days, starting, I think it's May 23rd. So basically, all of June, you'll have to apply for the homestead exemption if you don't already have it. If you've changed your property, it's obviously gonna affect that. If you've added a building, an addition, a remodel, obviously, we're not gonna lose out on that growth. The exemption allows for us to adjust it for that, but that's only gonna affect a handful of people. If you hit the next slide. So why is this important? So let's talk about what the rollback rate is. Christie mentioned the statutory rollback. The rollback rate was created when the Taxpayer Bill of Rights was introduced nearly 20 years ago. And the rollback rate's goal is to prevent backdoor tax increases by assessments rising and then municipalities and counties and schools not and then municipalities and counties and schools not adjusting their millage rate to reflect that growth. There's a formula that calculates it, and it's only based off of the inflationary growth. That's the growth due to market changes, not new construction, remodels, added buildings, new subdivisions, anything like that. And what the rollback does, it accounts for an average level of inflationary growth. So for this year, I think our inflationary growth rate for the rollback was somewhere around 7.9%, meaning if we rolled back to the statutory rate, if your property value would have increased more than that 7.9%, which the majority did, but average increase this year was about 11%, you would still have a tax increase, even with the rollback rate. The rollback rate is not a perfect, one-size-fits-all solution to stopping tax increases. House Bill 581 does. So if you go to the next slide. The current exemption keeps you right where you were last year. So if you had a 30% increase or 2% increase, if the millage rate stayed the same, you're being paid your tax on what you've got last year. So if the millage rate stays the same, tax bill stays the same. And I got some examples of that if you go to the next slide. So these are some real world examples. This property's 2024 value was 485,000. This year, it's going to be 521,600, 7.5% increase. If you look at those total estimated taxes, millage rates remaining the same, their tax bill is identical. If you go to the next slide. Here's another example, $110,000 house last year goes up to 129,000, 17% increase. Their tax bill went down $2, just because of how the calculation on that exemption worked. If you go to the next slide. This one was 319,260. This year went to 385, it's 20% increase. Their tax bill changed $8, and that was likely due to a additional building added. You go to the next slide. Unlike in the prior years where the rollback was very crucial in stabilizing the property tax rates for homeowners, this year, keeping the same millage rate is not going to cause a tax increase for our homesteaded property owners. If you're not homesteaded, if you've got a commercial property, agricultural rental properties, you will likely see an increase because you're not getting the protections of this home sit exemption. But for the vast majority of homeowners that are receiving that home sit exemption, if millage rates stay the same, they will not see a tax increase. And right now, we have about 9,500 homeowners receiving that exemption out of what we believe is probably 12,000 to 13,000 eligible. The vast majority are getting it, and the ones that aren't, I encourage you to come in and get it. It's a two-minute process in our office to sign the application, and then they'll be effective for this year. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions if you have any.
Paul, I would like to ask you to explain something because in past times, you know, the commissioners, and it was just a perfect storm, we went at 1.5, and then we got blamed for a 30% increase, and the property value actually is what done most of that. And the property value, y'all get the property value by the sale of actual property that's sold, that is mandated by the state, not this board of commissioners, correct?
That's right. We're mandated by state law to value real estate at its current fair market value, and that's determined by sales of comparable properties that took place in the prior year. So we have a state mandate to put the property at these values. We don't do it to raise taxes. We don't do it to raise money for the county. We do it based off the data that's available and in compliance with state law. If we don't do these increases in value, the county will not have a compliant tax digest. The county will not be able to bill and collect taxes at an appropriate rate to fund these services. And if it's out of whack long enough, the county will be penalized financially, and then that's a financial burden on the taxpayers for us not doing our job correctly. The increase in and of itself with this new exemption is not causing an increase in taxes as it may have in years past. And so this is the situation where the rollback used to kind of be important for the homeowners when it came to these rising property values, especially over the last four or five years. Now, this exemption accomplishes the same thing while still allowing the county to operate within its needs as far as its budget. Because this exemption costs the county about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars if it wasn't in place. If we didn't have this exemption, that's how much more revenue the county would have had from property taxes at this millage rate. It's, it's a cost to have this exemption, but the benefit for the homeowners, I think, is good in that it shields them from 20, 30% increases year over year. It keeps them at a predictable level. It also, by having this exemption, as Mr. Bennett mentioned earlier, allows us to have the flexible local option sales tax, which is the 1% sales tax to directly lower the millage rate. It can't be used for anything else. It can't be used to add to the general fund. It can't be used for building of buildings. It can only be used to reduce the millage rate for the general fund, for the taxpayers' benefit.
And just to clarify, one mill, up or down, that the commissioners have control over, if you own $100,000 worth of property, now, my number's not as sharp as Christie's or yours, I feel sure. But if the commissioners decide to roll it back or roll it up, one mill on a $100,000 piece of property, that millage increase or decrease is about $80 a year, correct?
Uh, about 40.
40, $40 a year.
For one, for one mill on 100,000, it's about $40.
So you're talking about $3 and some change a month out of 12 months. I just wanted to state that because everybody kept saying, oh, y'all increased us 30%. No, we increased it one and a half mills, and we give that one and a half mills back. So if we give, if we increased it one and a half mills and your property taxes went up 30%, when we give you that one and a half mills back, then your property taxes ought to come down 30%. But they did not, because that is not in control of this commission board up here. All we control is the millage rate. Now, if your property value goes up, you can blame that on your mama and your daddy and your brother and your sister and your neighbor and the trend that sold or bought the property around you. It did not, it was not driven by this board of commissioners or any other board of commissioners. That is mandated by the state through y'all's office. And another point that I want to make, you can't blame Leslie, and you can't blame Bu, and you can't blame Ronnie, because y'all mandated, mandated by the state to be taxed on 40% of 100% property value. That comes down from the state, because the state gets their piece of money out of it, and they take real property that's sold and has actually transferred. This is not a number that's pulled out of the air. This is actual transfers of property of what y'all headed appraised for and what it actually brought. And y'all are mandated to move the appraisal lot on that property. I just wanted to educate a lot of people, because a lot of people say that we went up. No, we did not. And I use a case now that's for a lot of people. Two years ago, you went to Walmart and you bought a loaf of bread. Sales tax, 8%, I think. You went to the line, John Durst Bread, everybody knows John Durst Bread, it costs $2 a loaf. Cost you $2.16. You go to the same Walmart, go through the same line, let the same cashier wait on you, and that same loaf of bread is $4. Now, your bill's going to be $4.32. Now, you tell me what went up. Did the taxes go up or did the bread go up? The bread went up. Now, did your tax check, was it bigger? It was, but the millage rate didn't change, your property. So I don't know how to apologize to everybody for making their property worth twice or three times or 10 times more than they give for it. I really don't have an apology for that. But the sad state of that is you have to pay the taxes on what your land's worth. Now, the only satisfaction you can get out of that is selling your place and just don't own nothing. But other than that, I don't know anybody wants to do that. I just wanted to state that, not only for the older commissioners up here, but for the new commissioners up here, because you're going to be challenged by a lot of people. And I'll use his name because everybody knows him, and I like to pick him. Chris Sakins come to my house, and he beat me up about, you promised you weren't going to go up on my taxes. I said, Chris, we didn't move the millage rate. Well, my tax bill's higher. I said, you're going to have to take that up to state. I said, the board of commissioners didn't move the millage rate. Well, all I know is my checks bigger. I said, I understand that. Your bread went up, brother. Your millage rate didn't. So I just wanted to put that in perspective, and I wanted you to stand there. I'm glad you corrected me, because I told everybody $80 a year. I was wrong. It's $40, $3 or something a month. So if you're about to lose your house, if you're going to lose it for $3 or something a month, I'm afraid you was gone anyway, but.
And just to kind of put any perspective, this isn't a Bullock County issue. This isn't a state of Georgia issue. This is a nationwide issue with property values increasing at the rates they did. Georgia, we're very fortunate, Georgia, we have relatively nationwide, if you look nationwide, we have low property taxes as a state, and Bullock County has among the lowest property taxes as a percentage of value in the state of Georgia. There's, there's less than 10 counties that, last time I checked, that have a lower overall millage rate, once you include school in the county taxes than Bullock County.
And for this, why are we talking? If you got your land in conservation reserve, it don't matter if it does go up 30%. You protected by a law in the state of Georgia that they can't go up on your taxes over 3% a year.
And that's in effect what this home sit exemption is providing for homeowners, is a similar type of an exemption to what Conservation Use does, where you, you really don't care anymore what your fair market value goes up to. Because as long as you have that base value, it could go up 100% due to inflation in the coming years when they include the inflation factor. This year, there was no inflation factor, so you're getting valued at what it was last year. Next year, there'll be a CPI inflation factor of whatever CPI ends up being, 2 or 3%. Well, that's, that's going to be 2% of last year's value, 3% of last year's value, not this year's value either. So you're kind of a year behind the curve anyways with that, so.
And, and just to explain this to everybody, because I had a cousin, and he let his come out of conservation reserve, and it went from just about, I don't know, $600 or $800 a year to $8,000 a year. And like you mentioned, you encouraged everybody to come in and get their home exemption. Now, there's things out there for people to do, but like I told him, he said, well, you ought to have told me. I said, there's 85,000. I ain't got time to run around and tell everybody, you need to go up there and put your house. I mean, it's here. Come take advantage of it. But when his changed, then if you, if you hadn't got your land in conservation reserve, then you need to do it. If not, you're going to pay a full blunt of the taxes. And I don't blame you for being upset, but you got to be a little mad at yourself if you didn't put it in there now, because I guarantee you, that farmer down there and this one and me and Mr. Bennett's talked about it, all of ours is in it.
Yeah, about 70% of qualifying land that qualify for it is in it, and that's about 3,300 parcels of land in the county that are in that program, and it's, it's a tremendous thing. And some of them are on their fourth 10-year renewal cycle now. I mean, it's that beneficial of a program.
And, you know, I wanted to state that because I don't, I'm not a keyboard warrior. I have never typed one letter on Facebook, and I don't intend to. You got to tell me what somebody says. But, you know, they take and put something on there, and a lot of people take that for just as the gospel. And when, there's a lot of, just because it's on Facebook, don't make it fact. So check and make sure, because I know of one parcel that was paying over $11,000 a year and put it in a conservation reserve, and it went to 597. And, and I can prove that all week long, anybody wants to see it. So if you don't take advantage of that, that's what you're missing. Now, you the tax man, if everybody does that, then probably the millage rate's going to have to go back up because it costs X amount of dollars to run this county. I don't really care who's in it and who ain't, but I'm just telling everybody, the 30%, all we control is the millage rate. I can't, we have no control of what your property's worth. I just wanted you to clarify. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Fisher, is there a percentage of this, that these appraisals have to go up or down before it's mandated or reappraised?
So we have a range that we have to fall within. We have to be plus or minus 10% of fair market value. We try to be within 5% because if we're not within that 5%, then we risk that our public utility taxation is not taxed at 40% like our citizens are. They're taxed based off of our ratio as determined by the audit department, and public utilities pays a lot of property taxes to Bullock County, and we want to make sure they're paying their fair share, just like our citizens are paying their fair share. So we want to make sure that our assessments are in line and able to make sure we bill our public utilities at the full 40%. It also helps, doesn't affect this board, but the school board's equalization ratio is directly tied to our assessment performance. So it's imperative for the school board to make sure that they're getting the correct equalization funding from the state, that our assessments are also at the appropriate level.
No, I just appreciate the information that I think we probably are a little bit late in getting some information out there, and perhaps people would have been a lot more knowledgeable about it. Always get good information out there, so we'd be very appreciative of you getting information to us this morning.
And I'll encourage everyone, when they get their assessment notice here in a few weeks, compare that estimate that's at the bottom of the notice to what your tax bill was last year if you're homesteaded. And you'll be pleasantly surprised to find that it's going to be about the same, plus or minus a couple of dollars, depending on how the, your property was configured as far as the exemption goes.
We probably want to encourage everybody to disview it online to make sure they see the information that was discussed this morning, because I think it make a huge difference. Especially with some of the decisions we have to make about the budget this year.
So just to clarify between you and Ms. King, if we do a full millage rollback, what are we looking at as far as a mill? How much of a mill are we looking at for the rollback?
I think it was like...
I think it's about 0.7.
Yeah, I would say 3/4 of a mill, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
Okay. If we do a 25, if we do a 25% millage rollback, what would that equate to?
I don't know, 25%?
25%?
Like a 0.25 of a mill.
Okay. So it'd just be a straight quarter mill?
Well, that's what I'm asking, is that what you're...
What would it equate to in a mill?
So, Mr. Chairman, are, are you asking 25% of the 0.7?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's 0.175 mills.
And I'm going to try my best to summarize what we're looking at today. Without any further cuts to our budget, we're basically forced, or we're not forced, but we're basically looking at three different courses of action, correct?
Yes, so...
Sorry. So we can, if we did a full rollback and didn't cut anything, we would have to use fund balance, about $5, $5.3 million of fund balance to balance the budget. That's, that's kind of a lot. If we rolled back just a little bit, I had a 0.25, that would be $3.4 million of fund balance. Or we couldn't do no rollback, it would be about 2.4, 2.5 million of fund balance. That's, I think that's a reasonable amount without having to worry about dipping so far into our fund balance that it's going to set us up for a later problem. And then if, if the board wanted to make cuts to try and make that number smaller so that you could roll back and still be able to offset with fund balance at a reasonable level, you're going to have to find something real. You're going to have to cut people. You're going to have to cut a real service. There's not, there's not going to be small enough office supplies and things like that that's going to cut enough out of that budget to make a real difference. You can cut, I mean, you can cut T-ball, but people pay money to participate in all those sports, all the recreation programs. So even if you cut them, you lose that revenue, so you're really cutting a minute amount anyway.
And I believe when we looked at it yesterday, just to clarify for everybody here, because someone will ask, if we cut out all the recreation activities, we're looking at about how much money?
I ju, just quick and dirty, I looked at if you cut out all athletics, all programs, which includes summer camp and after school, that's about $2.4 million of expense. And I didn't even go back and look and see how much revenue that would be, but it's over, well over a million dollars, because I know after school brings in over a million dollars. So you're, you're not making a dent, and you're, those programs are important. After school care is important for working families.
So going back to this full millage rollback.
So, going back to this full millage rollback, if we keep this, or if we take this and we balance our budget and take this $5.2 million from our fund balance, let's talk about the risk that's involved with that.
Well, last, this current fiscal year is a great example. We did have a healthy surplus at the end of fiscal year 2024. We also had hurricanes. We, we've had to spend, what, around $13 million out of that fund balance. We have since received 5.1, or 5.9 million from FEMA and should receive another six, seven, I don't, you know, we should, that should be fully covered, all that debris removal. But if we had not had that money sitting in fund balance, we would have had a cash flow problem that we were very lucky to not have because we had a reserve. We have, in the past, always tried to keep 25% of our budget in unassigned fund balance. I have since participated in some trainings. The best practices are actually, they don't give you a percentage because they tell you you need to be doing your own cash flow analysis to figure out how much fund balance you should hold because if you live in a place that gets a lot of hurricanes, you need to be holding more money. So at the end of fiscal year 24, we had about 33% of our unassigned fund balance. So, or 33% of our budget in unassigned fund balance. And so that, that's healthy, but we needed it. We needed to use it this year and even if it all gets reimbursed, it was important that it was there at the time. So we don't want to deplete that a whole bunch. And as, you know, as the budget increases, and obviously, this is a $7.2 million increase from last year's budget because we're expanding services. We are a growing county. If we are cutting, we're going backwards. If we're not increasing to match inflation, we're already cutting. So, growth is here, we're trying to catch up, we don't need to fall behind. So my recommendation is to not do a full rollback so that we're not putting ourselves in a bad situation in the future by using up too much fund balance.
And I don't want to monopolize the conversation here, but I do want to add one other thing and I'm going to throw some questions out to some of the staff and the audience to help clarify this. We're not just talking about growing, we're talking about the effects of inflation on, on the county when they buy things. In 2022, we bought a couple tanker trucks, correct? Can you, Joe, can you tell me what the cost of those were?
Um, not right off the top of my head, I, I don't have the numbers.
Okay.
It was significantly lower than what market price is today.
So if we bought a tanker, the tanker truck that we, that I signed for in February, how much did we pay for it?
A little over five.
Okay. Half a million dollars. If we bought that same tanker truck today, how much would it cost?
Probably no place to say it right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I happen to be at the EOC when those, the last of the three trucks were delivered several months ago, but this year. And the salesman said if, and that was a two-year turnaround, Joe, is that correct on those trucks from when we signed until they were delivered? He said if we bought the same truck that day, it would be two years again before we received it and it would cost $200,000 more.
Part, partially because of the federal mandate on emissions that some engine manufacturers were having to make some improvements. And that in and of itself on the diesel engine emissions was about an $80,000 increase plus the cost of inflation added to it. That seems like a great big number and I think out of context, you may not understand it if you don't put everything together.
Sure. Dink, when's the last time you bought a motor grader?
Uh, last year.
What'd you pay for it?
Uh, close to $400,000.
If you bought one today, what would it cost?
Probably five.
Okay. Let's talk about your fuel costs.
Mr. Chairman, can we have them come up to the microphone?
Absolutely, yeah.
Remember, we have a online audience and I want to make sure that everybody's...
My apologies there, sorry about that.
It, it's news, that's fine, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say, Dink, I appreciate it and I told them all that if this went real smooth, it wouldn't last long, but I know for a fact that Dink and Dee and a couple more have really been hitting this real hard and they, they have a presentation. And for the online viewers, I think that they need to be heard, they need to be heard what it would affect them if they had to cut 10%. They need to be, I mean, everybody needs to have a full grasp of this because just like we talking about this rollback, and I'll defend it now, with the 1.5 mills, had it stayed, and you get your millage rate right, and everybody's got the papers in front of them right now, had that 1.5 millage rate stayed, in effect, Christie King will tell you, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. Your digest, Bobby will tell you, your digest and your budget would be hitting spot on right now with what the fire department needs and what everybody needs. We rolled the 1.5 mills back, now we kicking the can and I can tell you about your fund balance. That's a Band-Aid. That's a Band-Aid, that's all that is. And Mr. Fisher just said, if you don't do a rollback, nobody's taxes is going to change. You do a rollback, you just taking more from your fund balance, you just putting a bigger Band-Aid. Now, let another hurricane come this year and you sitting here without no fund balance that can cover what we got to cover? I promise you, there's going to be a lot of people, there's more work getting a paycheck because they can't get out of their house because Dink can't fix the roads than you going to pay in property taxes. So I just want everybody to fully understand what road we going down and what road we've done been down and we know the effects now of both. Dink, I appreciate you and Dee, y'all done a lot of work and I want everybody to hear how this would affect Bullock County.
Talk to me about your fuel costs for last year.
Uh, last year was around $600,000 for just transportation, that didn't count solid waste or, or the other departments. We projected the increase at about $685,000 this year. So that's, if, and I know Christie took Public Works pretty much out of the recommendation for, for the budget, but if we had to cut 10%, we'd drop that, between fuel and maintenance, we'd drop about $140,000. That's not a big cut in, as far as budget overall, but to drop that fuel cost $140,000 just took probably 20% off your services to, to the public as far as transportation goes, as far as road service, dirt road maintenance and different things like that.
Thank you. And if you, if you have a presentation that you'd like to give, you're more than welcome to do that now.
Okay, thank you. Just to touch base, Public Works has airport, fleet, transportation and solid waste. The airport is self-sustaining, so I'm assuming that that would not be an issue. If we look at fleet, fleet has been running at this point probably 20% under budget for this year and that's basically because of the lack of employment in the staff. We've got two open positions there and so I'm assuming that that would not be an issue as well. It'll surprise me if we can fill those two positions in the next year. So we move to transportation. Transportation is a four and a half million dollar budget for, for the year, for next year is proposed. To cut that 10% is $450,000. To cut $450,000, as Christie has already mentioned, there's not a lot of fluff in any of this. If we look at $450,000 coming out of our budget on transportation, basically that's going to cut out all of our overtime. It'll cut our fuel and maintenance use by $140,000 and it'll cut out our part-time help. That meets the $450,000. But to do that, your road grading routes just increased from six to eight weeks to do a route to probably 90 days, three months. Ditching probably went from a year to a year and a half to, to two to two and a half years to get the drainage ditching done. Those, those things are something that we receive a lot of complaints on now, just by how we're, we're running short staff already, but we receive a lot of complaints on that. And if you extend those timeframes, complaints are going to compound. You know, the, the other option to, to public, to transportation, we've got 15 open positions, actually 16 as of this morning. We got a notice, one of our truck drivers left this morning. So it's, it's, it's very trying. If you said, we're not, we've already agreed to, to freeze two hiring positions in the transportation to, to try to adjust the, the salary issue, but if we cut the overtime, we're cutting their, their income anyway and we run the potential to lose more employees because of that as well. So it, it, it snowballs.
Where's most of your overtime come from?
Excuse me?
Where do you get most of your overtime from?
Most of the overtime in the last three to four years has been in relation to short staff and trying to make up for that short staff and, and spend extra time to, to do the, the work that's required for us to do.
Have you seen an increase in your overtime because of the storms that we had this year?
Absolutely. That's a, a big part of it because we do try to get things done. Matter of fact, we're planning to run this weekend to, to grade roads because weather's changed, it's given us a little bit of freedom to, to get back out there as the roads dry out to try to take care of that. So it's, it's a, it's an ever-moving target and, and we just have to adjust as we can. You know, we can, we can try to do as much work in a week as we, as we can, but if we hit a couple of rain days, it may keep us from even working the weekends. And, and I think some of you even got a message here a while back about someone was surprised to see our motor graders running on Saturdays and Sundays, but we try to adjust and, and try to keep that maintenance going as best we can. So it's, it's a, it's a big moving target for us to try to service the citizens as best we can.
Thank you, Dink.
Yes, sir. The solid waste, to move to the solid waste department, we're already seeing probably somewhere around 12% volume increase in solid waste this year. At, at three quarters of the year, we were already up 12%. We're probably going to be up 25% in, in bulk volume or, or waste volume by the end of this, the year. Solid waste's budget is 3.4 million, 10% of that's 340, uh, three, $340,000. Same thing there. The only way to, to really make a difference in cutting expenses is to cut services, is what it comes down to. We'd have to cut out overtime in solid waste, $150,000. Fuel and maintenance drop on that would be $38,500. To, to accomplish the full 340,000, we'd have to cut a full-time employee and two part-time employees. And, and we're growing. That's going to continue, our, our waste volume is going to continue to increase. There's no way that we can do that and continue to serve the citizens. You yourself have sent us messages about some of the centers and how overflowing they are just by not running one day a week. We run six days a week right now. And just by running, not running on Sunday, it overflows. So to cut it any would bring us back to four to five days a week. And can you imagine what kind of overflow that would be? And, and that's an, that's an environmental issue. And so we're, we're doing all we can. We put in for the two employees, I think that was left in the budget for us for this year to increase so that we can match the service as it's coming in and try to keep it serviced as best we can. If we tried to start running more days a week, we have a problem with the city transfer station, they already don't like the fact that we run on Saturdays or Saturday afternoons, especially because they don't, they don't want to be open. And if we ran on Sundays, they wouldn't want to be open on Sundays. So it's, it's a, it's a challenge to try to keep it up, but it is, especially the really nice weekends, people get out, they start doing yard work and they start cleaning up and taking stuff to the, to the collection centers and, and it gets overrun in a matter of a day. It doesn't take long. So that's pretty much all I've got unless you, if somebody has some questions.
Christie, just to clarify, those two full-time equivalents for solid waste, that equates to how much in the budget, a dollar value?
Um, it's about $150,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Dink, I think you just say, how many employees down, you said 18?
How many employees are we down?
Yeah.
Uh, actually, as of this morning, we're down 16 full-time open positions. We've got four employees out on extended medical leave and we've got one on light duty. So we're 20, 21 positions down right now.
That's, that's 30, that's 33% of his staff.
I knew it was 20. I just wanted to bring that out. You said 16, you was missing them others.
So, I, you know, hopefully the readjusting the position controls and stuff like we talked about at the last budget, I mean, at the last meeting, I think, maybe we can make a little difference, salary studies may make some difference, but we got people leaving, even though they're making the overtime, we got people leaving now for, for better opportunities. And it's, I hope we can do better moving forward with, with trying to get some employees in and retain the ones we got.
Thank you, Dink.
Thank you. Anybody?
I just want to say, thank you for the job you do. I, I noted to, towards the collection centers because I've seen on a couple occasions the last few weeks where they were empty one day and when I wrote by the next day, they were already filled back up. So I know they're getting done. Had I not seen them just empty, I would assume, I would have made the assumption that...
That we hadn't got to them? It, it just keeps coming. It, it's, we, we can't get ahead of it, it's, we're just chasing it all the time.
And, and I would imagine with the roads now, because I know just yesterday, just riding them off different places or whatever, you got a lot of washouts that I'm sure that you're in the process of working on right now from the recent rain event.
Yeah, we've still got two dirt roads that are closed from this last rain event that we've, we've got to go back in and do some extensive repairs on. So it wasn't as bad as some of the past ones, but it's still bad enough with, with the staff levels that we got to try to, to try to deal with it.
It's almost like we need to increase services instead of cut them.
I would at li- at least like to get back up to full staff so we can at least make an honest effort at it. You know, if we were full staff for, and, and even getting back to full staff will probably take us at least a year to catch back up after we get to full staff, but without being full staff, we're, we're constantly chasing it and, and there's some things that are suffering because of it.
Well, I have lived beside one of the old Dixie dumpsters and the recycling centers and whatever you want to call them now for 35, 36 years. And I don't know what's happening on Sunday. I know anything, y'all doing any different, but I'm telling you, they'll be empty Saturday and Monday morning, they'll be, it'll be over on the ground. And I've been living there this whole time and I can't tell you why. I, I, I've, I've got several things I'd like to blame it on, but I can't prove it. I mean, it's just, it ain't there one day and I get up the next day and it's running all over the place and people is calling me and I said, well, they just knocked me.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I can't put a definition on why it's, why it happens, other than the fact that I, people work five and six days a week now and Sunday is maybe their only day to do any, any cleanups or, or haul offs, so. But there again, like I said, even if we tried to do Sunday work, it's, we're going to run into an issue with transfer station and acceptance of it. So it's, we, we've, six days a week is, and especially with staff issues is, is all we can handle right now and you can see what that costs us. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Dee, would you like to come up and talk for a little bit?
Oh, good morning. I guess when, when, when I found out about this potential 10% was about last week and I know I've had conversations with all you guys, it was kind of a, for me, just immediate, kind of like a hard pill to really swallow. If you look at our 26 budget that we turned, that we submitted, the rent department, we were very conservative because we knew certain things that were coming. Our budget only actually went up $100,000. And if you look at the $7 million versus the $100,000 that we adjusted, $100,000, yes, is part of that $7 million, but that's really not a lot of that $7 million that everybody keeps throwing out. And for us, for that $100,000, that was for gas, sewer, water, electricity and our stormwater runoff that we have to pay. That was it. That was all we asked. So now when we're getting hit with a 10%... So now when we're getting hit with a 10% budget cut, we're cutting from where we were last year. And if you look at most of the other departments, they're gonna be cutting from request and I assume that from where they at this year. So again, that's gonna be very hard for the recreation department and what we do. One thing about us with the recreation department, we host the tournaments, we have, um, different events, we have different destinations that are here in, in Bullock County. And one thing I hate to say it like this because I don't, um, wanna knock anything away from any other department, but people don't come to Bullock County to look at roads. They come to play at our ball fields. They come to Splash. They come to all our, sorry, Dick, for Robert. But, but we are, we are a premier destination here for Southeast Georgia. We have people come up from Florida, South Carolina. We have people come all around, especially with our ag arena. You look at how many people come to visit that. Not just the services that we provide, but you look at something that I know Chairman Bennett hit on it earlier, the economic impact that we bring to Bullock County. If we start taking away these services, that splotch dollar that we think we're gonna get, we're not gonna get. I can guarantee that. But with this 10% budget cut, here's some examples of the services that, that we're gonna have, we're gonna have to, we're gonna lose for the recreation based off of you guys' direction. One is, right now, we take care of every county facility, county department facility for lawn maintenance, landscaping, irrigation, cut. We're no longer gonna take care of that. We take care of all the roundabouts. We're not doing that anymore. We take care of the overpass of 316, I mean, um, 16 and 301. We're not doing that anymore. That's gotta go to somebody else. That's coming out of my budget. Next, community events. This is gonna sting. We will no longer do the Fourth of July. We're gonna cut Arts Fest, Trick or Treat, Ag Expo and then the dinner. Those are things that we love to do for this community, but to get to a certain number for a 10% for us where we don't have fluff, that's only gonna be a small piece of it. Just with those alone, you're talking about $254,000. And for us, for a 10%, we're looking at, at the range of almost $800,000 to get to a 10% for us. 254, we're a long way away. With that being that far away, here goes some other things that you guys are gonna have to make a hard decision on. We're no longer gonna do youth football. We're gonna have to cut one service that we provide to children here at Bullock County. And it's gonna be between football, basketball, soccer, baseball, softball. We're probably gonna have to do football. Football is probably the one we probably get hit the most because of where we are in here, demographic of Bullock County. I have some numbers here for you. Right now, this past season, this is all, we, we operate on fall, winter, spring, which also equates with our fiscal year. Football, we had a total of 529 kids that play football for us this past year. Tackle alone, we had 349. We charged $65. I'm game for having discussion about raising the fees, but I want us to be very careful where we are about raising fees. If we wanna look for a 100% cost recovery, which there's very few recreation departments in the state of Georgia that have 100% cost recovery, very few. We did fee waivers this year for football. Out of those, 170 participants needed a fee waiver just to participate in football. Those fee waivers totaled $7,670. If we do 100% cost recovery for football, we're gonna go from $65 to 150 for flag. For tackle, we'll go $65 to $215 per kid just to play flag, play tackle, excuse me. Basketball, uh, we did $2,804 in fee waivers for 60 kids and we have 423 that played basketball this past year. Baseball and softball, we were at 840, charged $65. We had $1,817 in fee waivers that we, that we processed for 47 kids. Right now, we're right around that $13,000 that we did for fee waivers. Also looking at here potentially for the spring, we will also have to cut spring soccer. Right now, we're one of the few people in the state that offers a fall season and a spring season. To go in accordance with our association that we have with GRPA, we would do it in the fall like everybody else and we would have to cut out the spring soccer. Cut out this past year in spring, we had a little over 400 kids that signed up for spring soccer this past year that would just finish here a week or so ago. Next is, one, I know we talked about briefly, tournaments. Again, I'm all for us having a conversation raising these fees for tournaments. Right now, Lake Point. Lake Point is in the state of Georgia and also the United States. Lake Point, right out there in Cartersville, Georgia, is the number one destination for, it's called Perfect Game Turners, what it is, is the premier baseball association where people go play, Perfect Game. Theirs is $200 a field. Here in Bullock County, I was very cocky when I did it because I said, we got Mill Creek. We charged $200 a field. We charged the exact same thing as, um, Lake Point does for tournaments. This year alone, we have 21 tournaments, 21 weekends of tournaments. We can cut those back very easily, but again, what is that gonna do, the intangibles of what that's gonna do to us for the economic impact and what we have? Cause like I say, it's not just that, you're talking about the retail, what people do for retail when they come here to all these places. Even with those two, um, programs, still not gonna be nowhere near that $800,000. So only thing we can do after that, something that I really would hate to do, is we're gonna have to cut four full-time positions. So now we're talking about the livelihood of people. So that's what I just wanted to throw that out to you guys to, to show you, we don't have a lot of fluff. We don't have much that we can do, that we can cut just to cut. Between programming and things for the children of Bullock County, to the staffing, to the people who have been here and worked for Bullock County, the only one that I have not touched is childcare. I believe I touched childcare. I, I do believe that I'll probably be stuck in purgatory for a little while. But if we have to make a cut, we cut this childcare, that's where we're gonna have to be next, would be the childcare that we offer to the people here. Again, yes, you guys are gonna have a hard decision to make. I hate it for you. I wish I could help you. All I can do to give you this information. But a lot of these decisions that you guys are gonna have to make with these cuts, y'all's cell phones probably gonna ring a lot. It's gonna happen. But I'm here for conversation. I'm here to answer questions and anything that you guys need to, that we can do best serve the people here at Bullock County. Any questions?
Dee, how about that phone conversation you had the other day?
Yeah.
About, uh, you wanna tell that story?
Which one?
The one about the fire truck?
I can, I can. I, I...
Something I didn't know and I think everybody else needs to...
Well, you, 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 you probably caught me in the evening when I probably had a, a little sip or something. But, uh, um, I didn't wanna tell this story because I was gonna see if you got brought up, because this right here is probably gonna kick a couple of people. 2008, um, back then, we were called State Springs, Bullock County Parks and Recreation. In Splash in the Borough, we lent money to start the first ever fire department here in Bullock County. It was, in the paper, it was the first part was $300,000. What happened next? Splash in the Borough came out of our enterprise account and what it was called was an interfund loan to purchase a fire truck. Um, I know I talked with Toby and I talked with, uh, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Simmons remembers it vividly that this happened, these purchases happened. That loan has yet to be paid back to Bullock County Recreation Parks. A lot of people wanna complain about Splash. I'm not closing Splash. I'm not selling Splash. Splash is going nowhere. It was voted on to people and it's gonna stay here as long as I'm sitting in that chair. But if we had that money in that enterprise account, the stuff that we pay for the interest, uh, the principles and then also the depreciation part, it'll be in that account and the millions that we bring in, it'll stay there and it will keep getting paid off and we will never go into the red unless we just totally screw something up out there. But it will always be there in that kitty and it will stay in the black if we were able to get that money back into our account.
You know, I perfectly ask that because we, we have departments and everything is broke up in this county, but really and truly, it's all one big team, you know? And, and I've seen the comments too, the fluff, the fluff, the fluff. Well, I'm here to tell you, they, my farm account ain't running strict as this is. My personal account, which is a lot less money than this, but it's not running strict as this is. And there ain't no fluff. There ain't no fluff because if it ever is need and somebody has a little more, they always willing to go help the ones that don't have what they need.
Correct.
As long as for the, the whole big goal of citizens of this county. Now, I guess anybody that ain't got nothing else to do but sit at home and dream up what they wanna dream up and put it on Facebook because it's, you know, it's the gospel, is like Mr. Russian said. They can sit there and do that. But as long as I've sat here, Ms. King, Tom Couch, all the rest of them, they have run a tight ship, especially when it comes to this money. And I, you will never make me believe anything different. Our department heads are the greatest there is. I hate we've lost some of them, but we've got some good ones already ready in, in, in place. And I, I'm telling you, the, the people in this county do not know how lucky they are to have what they have. And just to prove it to you, go ask everybody around to see what county they came from to come here, because they wasn't all born and raised in. Dee, thank you. I appreciate it. I didn't, I know you didn't wanna tell that story, but you know, I think that was something that needed to be told and I don't see where it give anybody the black eye of nowhere, but that's something that I didn't know, because in 2008, I wasn't, uh, thinking about being no county commissioner. I can tell you that in 2008, I wasn't, so, um, but thank you. I appreciate that.
No, you're welcome.
Dee, just to clarify, how much, how much money did, did y'all loan out?
I'm not a hundred percent, uh, 100% of what it was, uh, but according to, um, Chairman Simmons, he says it was right under $2 million, everything total.
Any other questions, comments from Mr. Crosby?
Oh, I, I've got a, not for Dee. I just wanna tell Dee how much I appreciate him and Dick and all y'all doing the work just to, I just wanted, I think all of us understood, but I wanted to hold everybody to understand exactly if you done something like that, how it would affect everything in Bullock County because it's a, it's a domino effect over all of it. Oh, and for the ones that, that, that use the splash or any of the recreation stuff or if you ride on the roads or anything, uh, we established earlier, Mr. Fisher did that, and we not talking about going up a mill, we talking about either leaving it alone, borrowing some money from the rate of day fund. I feel sure we have to revisit if we have to go up in the future, which everything else goes up. I can't imagine the millage rate not having to go up. You still sitting in a county that's got to lower your millage rate that any county that touches it, uh, people fuss, why is everybody keep, why, when y'all gonna quit letting people move here? Well, I can tell you, if you keep your millage rate lowered in any county around you that's got all the amenities that we got, why would they not move here? So, but with that being said, we've established that one mill is $40 a year on 100,000 worth of property. Now, if you use any of the recreation department, you talking about going up on fees from, I heard something, I didn't really follow that a while ago, from $65 to 100 or 50 or something. Uh, if you, would you rather your taxes, if it did have, which Mr. Fisher said with the bill that passed, if we leave the millage rate alone, your taxes ain't gonna go up. I mean, you're gonna be covered if you've done your homework, your tax, I mean, if you're, uh, home exempt and, oh, conservation reserved, then you gonna be, you'll be fine. So would you rather mess with that and then if your children use Splash in the Borough or the Ag Center, or if you go out and sit down at that table and you eat that $70 steak dinner ever, if you affected by that, would you rather pay 40 more dollars or cost you $40 for a meal or would you rather pay 150, 200 dollars for one of your children to play ball or whatever? I mean, it's, takes money to run this county. We got to get to the bottom line on this, Ms. Christie does. It can be with raising fees or not messing with the millage rate or, or borrowing from borrowing, but, uh, at the end of the day, it's gonna cost the same amount to run this county for the same services. And if you mess with anything I just mentioned, you gonna cut your services, period. I don't care how you go about it. You can, you can do it. If you mess with any of that, you gonna cut services.
Well, I, and like the numbers that I threw out, that is a 100% cost recovery. I know, uh, one of the national bodies that recreation does is called NRPA. It's a national, um, governing, um, association for recreation departments in the nation. They, they shoot for an average for recreation departments between 25 and 30% cost recovery. That's, that's what they shoot for. That's the standard that you can try to set. Again, I, like I said, when myself and Chairman Bennett, we discussed this, this morning, I'm all for having discussion about potentially raising up the fees. I'm all, I'm all for that. But one thing that we have to be very strategic when we do these registration fees because one, I'm an advocate for children. I think you guys have been around me a long time. I advocate for the children, especially here at Bullock County. There's a lot of kids here who get free or reduced lunch that also participate in our programs. I don't want them not to have that opportunity to come out here to be, play a sport or do one of our activities. So we'll, we definitely have to be strategic on how we, how we do that, um, with the fees that we do have to increase with.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that, uh, I think, uh, both Dee and Dick, what they do, I, I do feel very strongly about one thing you said, Dee, uh, when you talked about the number of, uh, waivers that are given. I feel like we, as a county, have to figure out some way to, that we can have these, uh, young people participate because I think indirectly, if we don't have waivers and we can't have affordable programs, then we have other problems that'll come along because if these kids are not participating in sports or, or things like that, then their attention be, will be focused elsewhere. So I feel very strongly, uh, we have a hard task ahead of us. We have to figure out how we pay for them, but, uh, uh, not giving the, uh, ability for these students to participate is, is not even in the question, so.
Well, it's kinda like you just hit on that and that's one thing, again, as we advocate for things for children, part of our mission statement is to provide an active, healthy and safe environment for Bullock County citizens. And so that's one of the things that we do, if we can keep these kids active, hopefully Sheriff Brown won't have to go up on his budget much and they won't need them. You know, that's, that's one thing with us, if we can keep these kids active, hopefully that they turn out to be, one day they'll be sitting behind the dais as you guys are one day. So that's, that's one thing that we strive to do is, is to make sure that we are providing for those, those children. Um, so that's, that's one thing that we strive to do is, is to make sure that we are providing for those, those children.
Thank you. Thank you, Dee. So, I just want to ask one more question about Mr. Fisher. You know, our, our revenue problems that we're dealing with right now, and we talked some about how this is partially due to the, the property tax freeze this year. Is this gonna be a problem from now on, do you think?
It, it all depends on the continued growth of the county. We all know that the city of Statesboro has a lot of properties in various stages of development housing wise, so same thing in the county. I know James could probably touch on what's in the pipeline for the county, but all that new growth coming online over the next few years, um, is going to help, you know, with the real growth issue. The revenue share agreement that we have with the JDA for the Hyundai site that kicks in in twenty twenty-eight, um, that's going to be a significant windfall of revenue for the county. And then again, once the pilot programs run off on the suppliers we have locally, that'll again, just be windfall money for the county when those, you know, come online, but the homeowners are still going to be protected from all this growth with this exemption, they're going to see the two or three percent inflationary allowance on their exemption and that's it versus the ten, twenty percent that we've seen over the last few years annually.
And, and I guess what I'm leading up to here is, you know, that, and I mentioned it when we first came in this morning, yeah, we've gone through the first part of this, House Bill five twenty-eight, five eighty-one.
Five eighty-one.
Thank you. Lots of numbers today. Uh, House Bill five eighty-one, the other piece of this that we still have to work on is the one percent sales tax that goes directly to offset property taxes. And I just want to remind folks that property, or excuse me, sales taxes here in this county over the last five years have done very well, uh, and have exceeded the predictions that we've had for them. And I know there's people that get upset when you start talking about proper, or you know, another tax, but I look at this as, this is a way to free folks from a property tax. You know, nineteen million dollars is what we got from a one cent sales tax last year. If we got nineteen million dollars that went directly into the general fund, that offsets your millage rate. And again, that means that we're not having to have discussions like this and talk about what are the effects of cutting the budget and cutting services, so.
Yeah, and just to, you know, remind everyone, we're one of, I think it's seven or eight counties that doesn't receive local option sales tax at the county level. The school, Board of Education receives that local option sales tax. So if you compare our millage rate to a Bryan County, an Effingham County, uh, uh, Chatham County, their, you know, county maintenance and operations millage rates do appear lower than our maintenance and operations millage rate, and that's because they receive that local option sales tax millage offset that we don't receive that the Board of Education does, our Board of Education is a lot lower than theirs. Um, and that's what this floss will give back to the county is, is essentially that equivalent of a local option sales tax, uh, millage offset. And that's not going to just benefit the homeowners. Five eighty-one currently, this exemption is only benefiting homeowners that are receiving an exemption, I'm saying exemption. The millage rate reduction applies to every property owner in the county, commercial, ag, industrial, residential, boats, airplanes, machinery, equipment, everything that receives a property tax would be offset by that millage rate, so.
And then you mentioned commercial property. You know, if, if we do nothing and, and keep the millage rate where it is with no statutory rollback, commercial property will be affected by this.
Yes.
When's the last time that we've done a good assessment on commercial property in the county?
Uh, last year was the first, uh, large scale commercial revaluation and then again this year, we've refined that even further based off of, uh, sales that occurred. So, the last two years, we, we've gotten our commercial digest base up to where it needs to be statutorily. Um, so they are now paying their fair share, uh, just like the homeowners have been.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to be in you touched on the sales tax, Mr. Fisher, I think. You know, that sales tax is a big part of it and everybody needs to understand that Bullet County is faced with a lot of things that we all know about and a lot of us don't like it, but we, it's, it's here and ain't nothing we can do about it. We fighting for the southeast end of this county with fire departments and all we can. Now, with that being said, the only way to keep your millage rate down is you got to have tax money. The best way is with the sales tax, whether we, they impose another one percent to lower your property taxes off. Well, now, everybody knows that the main growth in Bullet County is the southeast end of this county. I didn't have nothing to do with it, nobody in this room had anything to do with it, but they gonna buy that, they gonna buy a place to live. If they got to buy it five acres at a time, if we put them in a subdivision, that's not here or there. They coming. They got to buy it five acres at a time. Now, and don't care how you feel about the wells, if you don't want the money off of them, that's fine with me, that's over a million dollars. But the sales tax is what I'm getting at. If we don't put some down there at our cola and one nineteen like a Parker's Kitchen that is in Blitston, Georgia, everybody's building them houses and I think Mr. Fisher would agree on this, I don't know of a house in Bullet County that pays enough property taxes to cover the amenities that they get, sheriff, nine one one, EMS, fire, recreation, whatever you want to call it, everybody falls short. Mr. Davis has said this several times, you know, every time you put a subdivision, that's a shortfall to the county. I don't know, I'm gonna say two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, you offset that with your splash money. Now, just for an example, where Harry kitchens was gonna put that thing on I sixteen and three oh one, the freezer plant out there, they estimated a hundred and seventy-five trucks a day at twenty-five percent of them stopping and filling up with fuel that the trucks stop out there, whatever, getting something to eat. Just twenty-five percent of them would generate over a million dollars a year that goes to Bullet County. Now, everybody down there is leaving. When I go that way, I don't, I have to because it ain't nothing. Everybody leaves out of Bullet County to where they got their house that they paying not enough taxes on, especially if it's conservation reserve or homestead. Conservation Reserve, it don't even pay enough taxes to mow the grass in front of it every year on the roadside. I got some, I'm guilty of that. Oh, but they forced into, they leave Bullet County not paying enough property taxes to cover the amenities that they get. Where can they got to go? They go to Parker's Kitchen in Blitston, they go to the truck stop. And when they do, they take our four cent off of every dollar out of Bullet County. And that's gonna continue and it's gonna be a force, a shortfall on the taxes being paid for the infrastructure that all of us have got to build. And we gonna have to do that by law, and so therefore your millage rate's gonna go up. So the only choice you got, whatever, light the wells that them dig down, I don't care. But if you don't get something down there at I sixteen and, I mean, one nineteen and our coal, if you don't get some kind of facility down there where we can get them dollars, they come in on the interstate, they use a federal highway, they get off on one nineteen, that's a state route. They don't use anything, they don't use our schools, they don't use our hospital, they don't use anything, they don't use our roads, but we get four cent off of every dollar. That's what everybody better consider because there's two, there's two places right there that would very well easily generate a million dollars a year, that's two million dollars. And they use nothing that Bullet County provides. But everybody can stonewall it all they want to, don't build it down there. I feel sure Bryan County appreciate it. And then we'll all, we'll go up on your millage rate and we'll all put the fire trucks down there and all of that. So, I just want everybody to fully understand this whole picture about this tax thing. You're not gonna keep Bullet County just like it is and keep the millage rate just like it is. Something's got to give in this chain somewhere, it's tight as a string right now, there's a link got to give up somewhere. Now, I'm all, I myself personally, I can tell you exactly what I knew that I'm gonna do. I'm, I mean, I'm not bashful about it at all. I'm gonna vote not to roll the millage rate back, borrow that money, Missy. This is the people we got hired, it's way smarter than I am. That's what they suggest and that is your suggestion, don't roll it back. Borrow this four and a half million dollars or what are, two and a half, I think now, with that, right? Borrow that from the rainy day fund, that gives us a year to get our heads together. Maybe we'll know something about them interchange is done, I don't know, maybe magically some truck stop will pop up morning, talking to everybody, I don't know. If it does, we'll be back. If not, next year, I can promise you, we're gonna be right back here doing the same thing we're doing right now, except we're gonna be borrowing more from the rainy day fund because I hadn't seen anything go down yet. So, I just wanted to explain to everybody exactly. But if we don't stop that sales tax money from going out of that end of the county and being spent in Chatham and Bryan and Effingham, then the citizens of Bullet County is gonna pay. Because we got, he's got to scrape the roads and pave the roads and haul the trash off, oh. I have a prediction about the trash by my house, I think it's the people that's coming over here from out of other counties. My way would be, um, countler and evans, they come by, they working at the fatties here. They put the trash in the truck on the, during the weekend, Monday morning about five thirty on the way to work, they stopped by my house and that's where the track, that's my, I don't sit down and get tag numbers, but I know who's paying who to get hauled off, everybody in this room's paying to get it hauled off. And so if we don't stop, start doing something to get that, the school board's gonna suffer, they, they over there struggling with there, I don't know how many million dollar school they trying to build. Well, them same people's gonna leave from that end of the county, take their, their lost and east flushed and there goes their two cent and our two cent with it. So, I just want everybody to understand that, that this, where we at, I mean, this is a Band-Aid and it's best we can do this year. Unless somebody wants to be real brave and I don't think there's nobody on my right down there wanting to do that, so. But we'll put this Band-Aid on it, but I know I do not suggest rolling it back, I mean, I, I've spoke about it several times for reason we in the position we in right now, had we not rolled it back, everybody up here, except the ones that done that, we still gonna be talked bad about, but everybody else would be sitting in the catbird seat because it would balance perfectly. You know, so, but that's my suggestion, I'm through talking, oh, y'all say whatever you got to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
You, you're the captain of this plane today, uh, and you're gonna chart the course for the next few minutes. I am gonna put the wheels down on it though, in case you want to land it. Uh, we, we do have someone else coming into the room a little bit later that had it, we kicked him out this morning. But I do not want to cut short if there are any questions, I'm not saying that. But I would like to say a couple of things while you, you are thinking about if there's any more questions. Uh, number one, I, I agree with, uh, Ms. King's assessment. Being part of the budget team, I'm a small part, my, my brain does not qualify to be a big part. I appreciate your time yesterday and the days preceding that, uh, to sit down with us and look also another set of eyes, kind of like mine from the outside a little bit for this topic. I think we ended up about three hours yesterday evening together. And not speaking for you, but I think I heard you say that there is no fluff. I think we, we came up with a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars total and that was those three positions that have been mentioned earlier. So I appreciate that, appreciate your support. The second thing is, um, commissioners, chairman, appreciate your support in, in listening to this today. Um, I know most all of you, probably, probably all of you have contacted Ms. King uh, over the last few weeks, months to this specific topic. And to my knowledge, she has answered your questions, uh, as quickly as possible. I encourage you to, when possible, out of your schedules, and I know everyone's very busy, uh, to, to come in and sit face to face. It, it saves a lot of time having to, to respond to emails, I'm not saying do not email, please do not misunderstand, don't, don't misunderstand that. But it's easier sometimes when you have a question, you have that face to face interaction and you can go ahead and, and compress the time and get your answers. Uh, she's more than happy to do that and she has a great staff that supports her on that. I would like to say that, uh, I think Mr. Rushing just said that, uh, talking about the experts. Again, not speaking for anyone, but I do not think there has been an instance where anyone that is still employed with Bullet County has given you information that is not accurate, uh, that has misinformed you. So I ask that you trust Ms. King and her numbers. We know there's some variables in there that, that we don't know, nobody knows. Uh, Mr. Fisher has been instrumental in pulling this together and he actually had a conflict today and rearranged his schedule to be here and I appreciate that. Um, that, that means a lot, that's the staff that you have at Bullet County. They are professionals, they know their craft, that's what you pay them for. And I'll say not enough in most cases. I just ask that you trust that uh, until someone proves they are not worthy of your trust. And I think you do. I mentioned being, uh, being an outsider to this process a little bit, uh, everyone up here knows that finance is not my background. I have a general knowledge, uh, probably not to the extent of Mr. Davis, I don't have his kind of pockets, but, uh, so I, I have to, I have to rely on, uh, Ms. King and her team. Uh, having been here seven years now in Bullet County, uh, working with these great people. I've never had an instance where, uh, they, they did not prove their worth in, in what they do, so. I appreciate that, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to be a part of this and, um, as part of the budget team, for whatever it's worth, my recommendation also is, uh, the same that Mr. Rushing just stated. Uh, I do not believe that the current economy warrants anything more drastic than that. If we were in dire straits, you know, I think it, it may be time to look at option two or option three. Uh, but for whatever it's worth, that's my recommendation, so. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know I'm late and I wasn't supposed to be here, but, um, the information that was given today, I was, came in yesterday and I talked to, um, Ms. Christie, you were there. I was privy on the information that y'all were giving and I was stopped by to find out where we were. But I will tell the audience and, um, citizens that are listening, they took the time to explain everything to me, where we were, how we got where we are, and I fully agree with option that we're taking. I agree with what the staff said, I think that they are, they work hard, they had already been there, what, three hours? And I was just there for about twenty-five.
Long afternoon.
Yeah, and, uh, the citizens, citizens gotta know that, that, that this is just something that, you know, we just threw together. They have actually worked hard and they continue to work hard, our staff continue to work hard to give Bullet County citizens the best that we can do. And, um, I always say this, when I go out of, of, um, the county, I say we got the best people working for us here. And, uh, I stand up for that, but, um, I think we got a the blessed, best plan that we can come up with for the citizens of this year, so. I, I, I know what was going on, I just came up here to say that, I guess, thank you.
And to clarify, our intent is not to, to take any action today. This, this was meant to be informational only. And the intent here was to really share with, with not just the commissioners, but with the public as well so they could see where we're at with this process. I, I'm gonna put this out into the public and I'm gonna challenge the department heads one more time, go back and look at your budget. Y'all know these things better than anybody does. And if there's something that you can cut, reduce. things better than anybody does. And if there's something that you can cut, reduce, put off for another year, please, let us know. But barring that, we have a hard choice to make here over the next few days. Do we owe you anything today?
No, I just wanted a, you know, general consensus on what the thought process is, and it sounds like everyone's pretty much okay with moving forward with the assumption there will not be a rollback. So, I am planning to produce a line item tentative budget to release on Tuesday.
And again, this is tentative. Um, if we do go forward with this, with no rollback, that means that we will have to have tax hearings, because this will be considered by law, a tax increase. So, barring no further comments or questions, I believe we're done for the day. I wanna thank-
Mr. Chairman, before you close the meeting now, um, and this is, so, we've been, I've been in contact with a bunch of people, these, uh, does have these, some of these big ponds, dams is busted. So, with Senator Billy Hickman's help, um, we have, we have been working and putting a team together. Um, as of right now, I just got a time reading off texts, basically just sent, why I've been in here. Um, he's been in contact with Tyler Harper, Rick Allen, and probably gonna see, send JT Hudson down here to see us. Um, we've been pretty successful in anything we've ever tried before with this group of guys. Uh, so I just want the citizens to know, we ain't forgot about it. The board's still looking into it. We trying to get you some help to get these, cause we want your pond dams fixed, cause it's tearing our roads up. So, we don't wanna keep wasting money, but we got to get these dams fixed. So, just letting citizens know, that is under, underway. We're trying to do something. We're going up the chain as far as we got to go to get something done for you, but be patient, and, uh, we, we are working on it.
Like everything else, though, getting these things fixed is gonna take time. But they're not gonna rebuild a dam overnight.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say, for the record, I too, uh, ran favor of what Ms. King recommended. Uh, it's almost, uh, scary to me, because I had a conversation with some of commissioners, and, uh, some of my thoughts, because I had more time to, I probably spent more time reviewing the budget this year than before. And to, to hear some of the, the numbers, and, uh, like I said, I can substantiate this, is very close to what I thought, just looking at the, at the budget here. And it just goes to show that the staff has done a phenomenal job. And, uh, uh, like I said, if it was easy, anybody could do it. And, uh, we just appreciate, uh, all the efforts going into it, and, uh, it's a tough decision, but that's what we signed up for. So, uh, I just wanted to, to, to say that, and, uh, to, to state where I stand at on the issue. Thank you.
So, I just wanna enclose and reiterate that, um, yeah, there's thirteen thousand eligible properties in this county that are eligible for homestead exemption. And, um, I don't math good in public, but I'm thinking there's about thirty-five, well, yeah, about thirty-five hundred folks that are not registered for a homestead exemption, that could, that are eligible. Um, if you're one of those folks, or you know one of those people, please have them come in and do their homestead exemption. Um, I didn't sleep a lot the last couple of days, cause of this stuff. I probably won't sleep a lot for a while. This is, uh, this is hard. But, uh, I wanna minimize this impact on folks as much as I can. So, again, we're not taking action today. We have some more steps we have to take with this. There will be a, a tentative budget that will be presented at next week's meeting. Uh, we will still have to have a public meeting on it. Um, we still have ways to go here in this process. I appreciate your time. If there's no further questions, this meeting's adjourned.